It is six oh two, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Pledge allegiance followed by moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence as we think of those who've gone before us. Thank you. Okay, Marie, roll call please.
Trusty Lewis.
Here.
Trusty Pine.
Here.
Trusty Marpy.
Here.
Mayor Patton.
Mayor Patton?
I am here.
I'm out. I'm out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Alright, sorry, Trusty Patton.
Noted in the press.
Make a note of that.
I am here as well.
Thank you.
So the mayor and the trustee.
The mayor and the trustee Patton are here.
Wow.
Mayor O'Malley, Mayor Ryan. Mayor Allen and Deputy Mayor Ryan.
I think I'm here.
I am not here, just for the record.
I'm, I'm-
And Attorney Gilchrist.
I'm a little bit out of it as well, I went home early from school and slept for three hours, so I would be somewhat alive. It's sort of working, so I'll just breathe only on Bobby tonight. Okay, just a few quick announcements, the sixth annual Stephen Colvin Memorial 5K Race is this Saturday, October 12th. We've already approved it, it doesn't need board action, I just want that to be out there. The annual trunk and treat, the date that Renee would like to use for the Wood Park is Saturday, October 26th, from six to eight. Technically, we have not approved that this year, but it's a great event that we do every year, so would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion.
That event. Bobby and, and the mayor, just kidding, and Vanessa, I think. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posts, carries, thank you. Another announcement, the northern end of the Greenway Trail, which is the end from, starting from the Cannon Street Bridge and going up to the wastewater treatment plant is closed this week, there are already signs, I think, up there right now. Just because they're doing more work on the sewer projects and the announcement we got at the end of last week was adjusted, it would be this week. And Neil, is it the delay, the closing of the Greenway, is that just this week, the northern end? What's that?
I believe so.
Okay, that was what I was under the impression as well.
That's what he told us.
Yep, okay. And the last thing I got from Denise today, Rachel Hickock and Molly Leone from Aflac would like to do a presentation for village employees on October 23rd at noon, it would just be basically a free pizza for people to discuss short-term disability, life insurance, accident and cancer policies, this would be something that the employees would pay for, but it would be deducted from the village pay. Denise told me that they've done things like that before here, do you guys have any problem with that?
No.
Okay, in that case, can I have a motion to, uh-
Motion.
Allow that in a sense. Thank you Mayor, thank you Craig. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posts, great. Carries, thank you. We have some folks here from Civicure, how are you guys doing?
Well, thank you.
I'm gonna have to refer to you as Barbara, my apologies. Please, uh- Please take the floor and tell us about the roof project that's moving forward on the Woodblock.
Well, Rick has the information, I'll give you the big picture and he'll do the details. We're getting a new roof. As most of you know, we've been busy for ten years raising money to buy the building and to secure the money that we needed. It came in a lot higher than we thought, three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, just for a roof. But we have to do it, we got a better price and we're about to proceed. There's only a short bit of inconveniences that might come to the community on Lower Classic Street where we have to have equipment brought in. It's a short-term distributor of disturbance, but it should be over in a day, Rick can give the details.
Yeah, so today the contractor got back to us and they're expecting to start October 11th and, or excuse me, November 11th. This is a two-phase project, there's roof work and then there's masonry work. The parapet walls, particularly around the roof, really need a lot of work, so the contractor who's doing the roof has hired a subcontractor so the two of them can work together on this. So the roofers expect to start week of November 11th. They said Lower Classic Street will only need to be closed for four or five hours while they hoist stuff up the roof, unload their staging and set it up. The staging is only gonna be set up on Lower Classic Street, it will be fenced in. They expect to have a dumpster on-site as well and a lift. They expect it all fitted on Lower Classic Street in that little nook in the building. So that's the only time that the street will need to be closed. After the roof is complete, they're gonna take the staging down and they're, they're gonna do the masonry work with a lift. So there will not be any staging required on John Street or Main Street as we had anticipated to do the masonry work. They're gonna use a lift to do that.
That's great.
That's the information I have.
That's great.
Will we need to restrict either any parking or any side, close any sidewalks while that's going on to, uh-
We expect to have to close down half of Lower Classic Street while, because they're gonna have-
But just on that one day or-
Yeah, before or five hours.
But like when they're working on the roof or anything, will we wanna restrict the sidewalks around the building or anything in case things? I mean, it's contractors' call, really.
They didn't anticipate that, they're a fully insured company, obviously, and we're working with a historic architecture firm that's helping us through the process as well, that's familiar, we're working on historic buildings. There has been no mention of it yet, but we would certainly consider-
I think, I would just, if the need comes up.
Sure.
You know, don't-
They're using the scissor lift, which is a lot better than scaffolding when that pointing takes place, because they just go up, do the work and move along.
Yeah, I just worry while they're pointing, you know, if stuff's falling down and things, if we do need to restrict it, I just don't-
I'm sure they'll have cones and some guides, guidelines to follow.
We will have to notify the residents, right, on Classic Street, Lower Classic, as far as the parking, because you know-
Is that a contractor thing or would that be us thing?
I think we're the ones closing the street, right, and we're gonna have to close the street.
Yeah, it would be the village, I would think.
Alright, so-
I think, I think that we can just probably put some signs out.
Well, I'm not only like hanging up some signs and posting everywhere, I think, maybe, are, are we allowed to put things on, on windshields for vehicles to park there, so the people to park there have a direct knowledge that it's coming?
Well, we'll, we'll treat it probably, if Neil wants to correct me, the same as who would do a parade or something like that. We'll put some signs out the night before that the people park and, and then-
Beware.
Yeah.
We'll have a patrol car down there for the time that it's closed, so we can monitor the situation.
So Neil, will we close it the night before or basically close it first thing in the morning?
The signs will be out the night before, so-
Alright, so it'll be closed the night before, so people don't park there by accident.
The signs will be out the night before. I'll have to, I'll just make a quick freeze through and-
Okay.
And we'll let you know when that happens, specifically. We plan on advertising this, by the way, and we wanna thank the community for all the generosity over all these years, because it's a community that's basically putting a new roof on that building.
That's great.
So we wanna put banners everywhere and let everybody know.
Things will look good on.
Yeah, things will look good on, exactly.
When do you think you'll be able to start hosting some, some events there?
Yeah, man, we can't wait. As you all know, it's been ten years just to get the building and to do its reconstruction. And we didn't wanna go for big money and for a lot of reasons, and everybody remembers Don Pierce. Dan Pierce, he said a great thing before he passed to us about that, he said, "There's lots of free cheese in a mousetrap." And that's government money, so if you get that, you gotta pay it back immediately. So our slow grow has proven itself. And another couple of years, we think, we're gonna probably start to have maybe four performances a year. So I think three to five would be safe.
Yeah.
If not sooner.
Well, I know a local music teacher who's jumping to use his face.
Yeah, we do, indeed, and others.
Yeah.
To that point, they did some acoustic testing on the third floor and they said that people can come from all over the world, like Detroit Music Hall, to record in there, because the acoustics are phenomenal.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you remember those people, you're around long enough to go upstairs, it's a chestnut floor. And the shape of the, of the, of the ceiling on both sides is from the original Mansard roof. Even though it burned twice, they rebuilt that Mansard interior, so the sound is really incredible.
The first time you get a choral group in there, it's just gonna make people weep.
Oh, it is, it is, it's amazing.
So beautiful in there. Alright, well, that's great, and I, I think I speak on behalf of the board, you have our full support on that, making that happen, getting the road taken care of and we'll just, I guess, touch base when it becomes sooner. And we'll, when you guys are ready to put out information, we'll put it out on our website and Facebook and stuff and- Neil, anything else? Board, you guys all, all good? Do we need a formal action to approve the, doing that or just do it?
Have you coordinated with the building department? Mark's aware of it?
Uh, Mark is casually aware of it, I thought he might be here tonight, but-
He has, he has another meeting.
He has training in Albany and then he gets back later and he's got a meeting, so it's a door up tonight.
Yeah, just for me and then, that's good coordination with the village on the street closure.
Alright, that's great.
Because most of the people parked there are, I think, are employees like of Mitsui and Dumsoil.
There are a few residents on, so, yeah, so, so, um, three or four cars parked there. Barbara parks there, Ed parks there, a lot of people park there for the main effort, so, we're blocked, so.
So, but they, they notice there's an up, Neil?
Yeah.
Okay. We're not gonna close the road the night before, we'll just put the signs-
Put signs up the night before, yeah.
We'll pull the barricades apart at that time.
Great, thank you guys.
Alright, thanks.
Keep doing what you're doing, loving it, thank you. Alright.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good one. A few quick updates, Highway Garage has made some substantial progress, have they started doing the cement yet?
Hopefully Thursday or Friday.
Weather depending, right? Alright, so that's, that's moving along quite well. You guys should drive down and stop by to see, a lot of the framing is up and it looks, looks great. The first time, I, I think I stopped by, they only had half the framing up and I was like, "Man, this looks smaller than I remember," but it doesn't anymore. In terms of the sewer project, and I, I know we had the special meeting and we discussed a little bit about going into executive session to discuss this, Andy, is there anything else you wanna add in terms of the, the public right now, in terms of our discussions with Honeywell?
No, there'll be further discussion with the board and-
Yeah.
On the overall project, I do believe, has Louiezy remodeled?
Yes, yes. So that is all progressing, yep. So everything is progressing, we're, we're looking, things are sort of back moving online, so in terms of all those hurdles, things are moving forward again. If and when we have something tangible to move on in terms of an agreement, a possible agreement with Honeywell, we'll of course make this public and make sure that there's ample time for everyone to read and consume it before the board moves on anything like that. So, that is it for that. In terms of the Woodsbrook buyout, again, we're really close on getting to the closings. We had one more hurdle that we didn't have on our radar that came up as another entity who had to do another review and required another thing. So Andy put together two resolutions tonight that would formally authorize me to, to execute the latest environmental compliance thing they have and then basically to enable us or anyone else from the village to sign whatever new staff for closing. So from our end, there are zero hurdles and zero possibility of hurdles, it's like a track with a shield around it. But that being said, we're, we're hoping in a week or two to know from the state and be able to schedule closings. And no changes from what we talked about last time with, with which buildings have gotten contracts back and so on and so forth. But once we have closings done, that following meeting, I'll redo the map and show where we're at with some updates for everybody. The alternate water supply study is expected to happen sometime in the next few weeks. I know DEC had been talking about the possibility of doing it on the SIPWIG meeting night, this community participation working group night, which has been scheduled for the 23rd, I don't know if that's a hard date yet, but I would expect sometime in the next few days. That would become a hard date and we'll have that out there. And what that will be is, I'm not sure if DEC is gonna release the report on the moment or like a day or two before so everyone can look at it, because they're trying to find the right balance between getting information out and also being able to explain things without people getting the wrong impression. So that's coming, and it should be this month. And I know that's about the fourth consecutive time we've been saying it should be this month, but it should actually be this month. The building became cursed about two weeks ago. We had a amazing amount of things happen at once, including the DWI situation that hit a vehicle up the street, knocked it out of park and took out an entire phone pole, one went over here, the one that all of a sudden looks nice and new. Also Verizon was doing some things with the lines and did they cut something or screw something up? Something happened and all the lines went down and then some of the lines were back up, but some of the lines weren't, and then we thought we were good, but then all of a sudden the court fax and the village fax weren't working, but the police fax line was. And then those got fixed, but now the 911 line isn't working.
Was that on the Friday?
Yes.
Yeah.
The one of the issues that they're saying is that the old lines had, were made of like paper, so they kinda like dissolve.
Yeah.
So now they're trying to put the new lines in and I gotta code these. And the way they're coded from the old way through the new ways is causing a little bit-
So, yeah, so we had the combination of the pole coming out, line issues with Verizon making changes. And then we had a major server issue, now we have a server for the building here. The software that it runs would be QuickBooks, which is the accounting software, ITAX, which is the tax software, and IPS, which is the code enforcement software. And what happened was the server basically stopped responding, because it was so bogged down. It received a hard reset and then it started to rebuild itself with the, the backup hard drives that are on it. We thought there was a problem with the drives, it wasn't, there was a problem with something else. I had two different people come out over the weekend, one of them got to finalize it Sunday night, probably around nine o'clock, where everything's working again. So the, you guys were down most anything except for basically like internet and email for Thursday and Friday in a sense. And it got me really thinking about, do we need to have a second server, do we need a new server? So I'm gonna be giving some recommendations on what we need to do to prevent this from happening again. One of, our server in a sense right now is, is an older homemade one in a sense. And what that does is it allows you to alleviate costs, it allows you to, to mix and match items, which is good, because it keeps costs down. And Bob Nesbit, who did tech support for us for many years, was amazing, because he did so much for so little, and that was a huge, huge asset. I'm now looking at the fact that our server went down for two days, which rendered our office, in a sense, there's not much you guys could do, except toy your thumbs and answer the, the window and the phone, when the phone's working. So I need to think of a way to fix this, and I think that the remedy that I'm gonna be bringing to the board and I have to obviously, you know, go through the proper channels, is purchasing a new server, which will be more expensive, but it will be a standard server. So if someone has to come and do tech support, they go, "Oh, it's, this is the server, this is the thing, this is what it's running, now I need to know what I, I need to do." That could cost upwards of three to six thousand dollars, depending on the type of equipment we need, the type of support we have to install it and so on and so forth. It's not something we have budget for, we do have a lot of contingency that we haven't tapped into yet. But I just wanna know that that's coming, it's gonna be a significant expense, but like a lot of other things here, my goal is to understand what's working, what's not, and then make a fix to it and kind of make it like a permanent fundamental fix. And I think this is gonna be a permanent fundamental fix. One of the things I thought about was having a second server and maybe having a backup. But as one of the, the guys who clearly knows the stuff said, is what that basically is, is basically it's more risk that more things are gonna go wrong. So if you can have one solid server that's working and be good, you're not gonna have an issue. So, yeah.
Can you check with, right now, I've got a call on Doug, because our computers are not working too fast.
No, that, that was fixed, I thought, Sunday night.
I'm still down.
Really?
Doug sent me a message and says he's gotta get back.
Okay. When I'm done here tonight-
Second printer?
I have an extra printer over there, I'll bring it over and we'll put it in on one of the computers, that way you can at least print from one of the computers. There was a network problem that you guys were having as well, something, all, they're, they have a copy machine that all the machines print to and something is not happening right in the network. I thought 10 was here and fixed that, but I guess not.
No.
So anyway, that's coming. I think that's it for my updates, any questions, thoughts on any of that? Awesome. People to be heard, as always, please state your name, address, recordings are, are, the, sorry, the meetings are recorded and just to get an idea of how many people would like to speak tonight.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, so it's just one, two, okay.
Could you please explain?
Name and address.
Lauren Hack at Third Street.
Thank you, Lauren.
Would you like to expand upon, for the people whose lives have been interrupted, the drilling being done with DEC?
There's a lot of drilling, McCaffrey Street, John Street.
Exactly, that never got sent out appropriately to people, so they know when to expect an end.
Where, where, where is the drilling happening?
Wherever it is at the moment, I, it lasted a full week.
Is it the one around the John Street area?
No.
The McCaffrey Street area?
It was on Second.
Well, they're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
Right now, they're on First Street.
DEC did not send out the appropriate notifications, apologized for the ninth minute time.
Yeah.
People are asking when they're going to be done, we've gotten several answers, I'd like to know, if you'd like to expand on that to report to people from our last CAG meeting.
I know that's come up in the CAG meeting, two meetings in a row. And the state has apologized, two meetings in a row.
And still hasn't picked-
And still we are. I will get some information and get back to you. I'll make a call to DEC tonight. So drilling is right now on Second Street?
It just got done, it was there for a full week.
They've been on First Street since like the corner of First-
And we're talking right in front of the hole.
First and, I'm sorry, they're on Center and they're on the corner of Sen- Center and First, right now.
Right now they are?
Yeah, they have a rig still set up there, they have the road half closed and blocking and parking, there's no parking.
And that's DEC and it's not the sewer project?
I have no idea.
Well, it's their subcontractor, but it's DEC's, it's a whole week.
It's Honeywell.
It's Honeywell.
So that must be the expanded investigation for the John Street site, which is- Okay, I will find out, apologies for that.
Not our fault.
Anything else? I'll take that as a no. Stoic no.
I don't know how much you wanna report in CAG meetings here, so.
I missed the first half of the last CAG meeting, so-
No, I remissed for twelve, so it's yet.
I spoke with EPA, they're still working on it, it's basically the gist I got. I think they floated a possible November release, which doesn't help us, because if the meeting's in October and they're thinking November-
I have to go to a meeting with them and I'm debating it.
Would be interesting.
Not with me.
I know, I know, they're not on my happy list either. Is that, is that it, Lauren, I'm sorry?
Uh, just, just, if, if I do go, I was invited by C H E J. We get to bring three asks to the table, so it's maybe something that the board wouldn't like to get back to me about if I do.
Who's C H E J?
Center for Health Environment, it's Lois Gibb, Love Can Help lady, they have regular meetings with EPA.
Okay.
And they're putting forward a new bill to refund Superfund in case PFAS are added to hazardous chemicals, whether through the NDAA or standalone bills, it could either break or make Superfund.
That's really interesting, I, I didn't think about that long-term. If PFAS is added, it's gonna have ramifications on Superfund, which will have ramifications on budget, which is why they're thinking ahead.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Kevin Allen, 5421, State of Seven Music Falls, New York. Your phone problem was 686 wide. I had a Verizon tech on Saturday because I had the greenhouse, because I could call out, you wouldn't hear any phone ring or anything else. So the tech showed up Saturday, said it was down here in this office, down here at this building is where the issue was.
Boxed right up on that pole, I saw like guy there three different days.
It was all over, yeah.
It was-
It was everywhere.
I couldn't call in my house for like three days.
You reported landlines. The other thing is, I had a couple people off the greenhouse, they were buying pumpkins, and they wanted to know who was doing the Halloween parade this year.
We were just talking about that.
I just got nominated to that.
We just nominated Vanessa.
I don't know any answers for you, anything right now, though.
The only thing they said was HAC3 had no more employees and they used to do it, is that correct?
I've done it with HAC3 a couple times too, so we can do all that, yeah.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, I'll do that.
I reached-
Yeah, you don't, please.
I reached out to both HAC3 and Huzik Rising today. Got one answer back from one person at HAC3 who didn't think anything was happening, but sent me to someone else to confirm. They didn't confirm before tonight. Huzik Rising did discuss it at their meeting last night and they did not feel that they wanted to take it on, but there were two other people that were interested and they were gonna get back to me with that tomorrow. So I do have some information and I can forward to you, if you wanna grab it and run with it.
Um, Little Sprouts?
No, that's not-
No, that's trunk or treat, that's-
She'd, she'd asked about it as well.
The parade would be probably on the 30th, the night before Halloween.
Perhaps if you, do you see the town supervisor, you might wanna do something jointly?
Actually, I think the town usually funds that, for five hundred dollars.
Well, whatever. It used to be only the town, right?
I believe Eric is more AJY.
She was contacting.
Oh, okay.
Eric is one of them.
It doesn't keep me impressed, whatever you need.
Alright.
Should we try to somehow incorporate it into, because look at the turnout she gets for the, the trunk or treat, there's so many kids at that, like, shouldn't we do the parade before?
You don't, you don't, don't mess with Halloween.
Don't take that on.
The last person that did that, the last person that did that was on the town board and they lost the election the following year and that was a whole-
I was just thinking the turnout, to have everybody parade to the, to the skating rink.
Did they just try to suggest a change?
They're not going skating rink.
They did, they did. Halloween parade used to be on October 31st.
So happens to be the rains.
Not on October 30th.
Oh. So they made the change from the 31st to the 30th and it was like a firestorm and they never got back on the board?
Reinventing the wheel, yeah.
But are we still doing it on the 30th?
Yeah.
That's what it's been.
Okay.
I always, I do crazy makeup to my kids, so it's always been a pain in the butt doing it two nights in a row.
They trick or treat on the 31st, so they do the parade, so they don't do it all this summer.
So we'll, we'll figure out, we need to make sure the parade continues on, because I feel like it's been like the 50th, 7th annual or something crazy like that, I don't know what the number is.
And please reach out to the town, you know, do a joint-
Yeah, one of the names that I was given is on the town board, so.
They do sponsor, I know they, they pay the money, they used to pay the money.
Actually, the police PBA used to sponsor it as well. We'll be in, just let us know how much.
Do you know, Vanessa, do you know Eric on the town board? Okay.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, he's, he's the other person.
We'll make sure, we're in good hands.
If work, if you're looking for money, just let me know in advance.
Yeah, let me figure out what I need the money for, I don't know anything about anything right now.
Chief, I am looking for money.
The prizes, okay.
Chief, you have several mayors up here looking for money.
Just if, if the papers are here putting in that there, there's definitely gonna be a Halloween parade, if you could do that.
Yeah, yep.
All the pumpkins are gonna be donated?
By McNeely, she had to go up in the field, pick all you want.
Put that in the article two, please.
It used to be Stewart's donated like the chocolate milk and stuff like that, and stuff like that.
Maybe everybody can follow up with email from everything they know about.
That sounds like a good plan.
I've attended it and I voted with HAC3, but I don't know what you need me to do.
Alright.
Get you all the information you need from us, don't you worry.
Thank you.
Alright, so, anyone else for people to be heard? Okay, great. Reports. Treasure report. Ben, anything you wanna add to it?
No, just a really busy month and working on things that we've talked about or going to talk about during the meeting, including the Greenway Woodsbrook buyout, the Highway Garage, Snow Street. Denise also had time to work on the retirement report for the month and quarterly, state and federal reports, so busy, busy.
Alright, unless there's any further questions, there's a motion to approve the treasure report. Thank you. Craig, thank you Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Posts, carries, please support, chief.
Total calls for the month of September were 121. Total calls for the, so far this year, 1,207. Last year at this time, we were 986.
That's November's date last year.
In the month of September, we had a total of 13 arrests for the year, 118. Last year was 124. If we go down through the service calls, not to go through all of them, but I'd like to highlight the one that says criminal mischief, there were 16 of them. They were, majority, if not all of them, were a result of the spray painting that occurred on the car. And there was a lot of angry people. We had the call that started coming in around quarter after six. By around 10:30, we kinda knew who we were looking for and what we were looking for. There was a little bit, as some people thought was a slow process, but you know, you had to make sure that your i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. We were working with the state police and the sheriff's department, because they had a few that occurred outside of the county as well. But we made the arrest, four individuals were arrested. At this present time, there was confusion and I'm gonna talk about this, because it is becoming a problem and everyone's starting to hear about bail reform and they're also hearing about raising the age of kids. Bail reform is, has been changed by the state where we have to be very, you just can't arrest people and bring them in and set bail on them now. There's gotta be some real strong reasons to put bail down. So a lot of people are upset that these kids, and I, I call them kids, even though they're in their twenties, came in here and they thought, people thought that bail should have been set up. The judge, I have to say, did a pretty decent job, because what they did with it was, was worse than bail. These individuals were remanded to their homes, there was a curfew placed on them, there was probation placed on them and they have to blow into an Alka-Seltzer 10 times a day. They also have to be subjected to drug testing at the will of the probation. Already one of them violated it. They were arrested immediately, brought here in front of the judge, and they were remanded down to the county jail for a weekend. I have had a conversation with him as he was leaving the jail. I have had a conversation with him as he was leaving the jail, um and he said he never wants to do that again, so.
Hey, alright.
Let's hope.
Alright.
I just wanna say, the officers did a great job with it. Um great cooperation with the sheriffs and the state police. And um so it, it was, it had some good workouts, but. Um the long run, it was some, it was some really crazy damage that was done for no, no particular reason other than some intoxicated people.
When do they go to court? I know people, people think the restrictions were the outcome of this.
No, tho- those, those um, those are restrictions at home that stay in place until the court cases are resolved. So if it takes six months for the court case to resolve, those, those stipulations stay in place. I'm hearing that their attorneys are already reaching out and then attempting to try to make some kind of deal. Whatever that may be with the district attorney's office, a lot of times it moves from us to the district attorney. And we're kinda left out of the picture until they, they come back in the fuck, but you know.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but some people did think that restrictions were the, the penalties that they were, they were facing.
I know it was kinda confusing and you know, when we put them out, even now on Facebook, I gotta be careful when I put out on Facebook because the state has committed, said you can't do this, you can't do that. They don't want pictures placed out on Facebook anymore. Um they want uh names, it's kinda, they're, they're, they're frowning on us using names. It's really got crazy now with kids. And next year it gets even worse because when they turn eighteen, they have to be treated as a juvenile, so an eighteen year old. Um who gets arrested, you're not gonna be able to put their names or anything out there. Pardon? None of these kids are eighteen, I'm just pointing it out to the eighteen. So next year it's gonna get even worse. And we're gonna have to deal with uh rec- uh discovery. Where we're working with the district attorney's office now because they have to have all our cases immediately s- sent to them. That have to be immediately sent to the defense attorneys. So it's a lot of paperwork that has to be done real quick, we might have to update some of our equipment here. Uh so we get the emails or whatever else we have to do, uh we meet with the district attorney's office about it, so it's gonna get a little bit.
I've had a lot of conversations with the school, uh superintendent and the resource officer about. How raise the age is going to have some very significant changes and in my mind. From what it seems like, it is gonna put us smaller municipalities even further behind the eight ball. Um and that's something I, I would assume that once that change goes live and people start to see the, the, the repercussions of it, I think there's gonna be one. Heck of a blowback on it.
I kinda think there is.
I'm waiting for that uh to sort of materialize and I think I'm gonna be a part of that, just based on how things. Will work or won't work under the new system, which I think is gonna make things a little harder, that's just my own personal take.
Our juvenile rates this year have increased.
Yeah, I think it's increased over the past couple of years.
We've been, we've been dealing with it um in, in these kids knowing.
Yeah, and it sounds like depending on, and if they're seventeen and they wanna give the officers a bunch of crap and swear at them and resist and whatever. The, the police won't be able to really handle that and the consequences will be like, eh, you're minor.
Well, we're gonna have to handle it, we're gonna have to, you know, deal.
That's concerning.
Are we still gonna try to meet, Bob?
We'll see, what's that?
Try to get that set up so we can meet with the county, the judges and they got postponed, remember we got postponed?
Put that together for, before the end of the year, so we can be ready to go for June. It's just a matter of sending out an email.
Now that school's back in session and everything, right?
I've had a conversation with Pat at the school, so you know, we, we're trying to come up with a, a, a date.
Okay.
Okay.
And the, just real quick, the arrests, additional arrests were pretty large, need E W I's or criminal mischief grant, or criminal conditions, so.
Alright, any other questions for chief?
I'll make the motion be accepted.
Second.
Thank you. Bobby, Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you. Uh would you not have a code enforcement report tonight for two reasons? Again, the server was down Thursday and Friday and typically that's when they work on it. Also, Mark has three days of training in Albany. Um so uh I think it's like eight to five or nine to five or something crazy like that, so. Well, we will get caught up on the next meeting, I know that Mark is very detailed in all of his reports, so. Uh do you need to approve the code enforcement report of no report? Or do we just move on? Awesome, community service report? That's alright. Community service report, um you can see it there, hundred and twenty two hours, any thoughts, questions, if not, looking for a motion to?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, Bobby, I'll give that one to Ben, cause he's louder, I guess my right ear works better. All in favor? Post? Alright, clerk, deputy clerk report, anything you guys wanna add? Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Thank you Vanessa.
By the way, Marie, have you seen any kind of maps provided by Verizon for their expansion of bios in Huzik?
No.
I talked to one of the techs and they're doing an expansion of bios throughout the village and possibly the town. And uh he said, he didn't have any details on it, but he said each town or village should have a map. Sent by Verizon to their municipality.
I have not seen that.
We were calling.
Champion Mark too, because.
They also said they're trying to be.
They're out, yeah, they're definitely out in the town, they're out in East Huzik big time.
Fixing their problems.
Yeah, Hudson Hill Road, they're on Hill Road.
Apparently they don't work, they don't start working till like ten, they park there at eight and get out of the truck at like ten. I wanna.
Be my second job.
But that's very good news to people out in the.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, so um we've already have the motion and seconded, all in favor of agreeing? And so, um opposed, carries, thank you. Highway reports, anything you guys wanna highlight, Bobby or Neil?
Uh Neil, we're just about to leave pickup, it's gonna start October twenty eighth through November eighteenth. Starting in Ward Ford, three, two, and finishing Ward One. You can take your leaves to the transfer station as well for free. If you put your leaves in the street though, please don't cover up the storm drains. Uh what else, Neil?
On the bottom, we gotta do something on the bottom.
Oh, as far as uh requested to keep the only summer help working until things slow down. Much more work to get done long after that, I agree with that Neil, if we, do we find money for it?
I talked to Denise about that to get an idea of, of what that costs. Um, oh where is that email? Here it is. Um. At eleven dollars an hour, if he works eighty hours over two weeks, the total gross, in a sense, the cost of the village is eight hundred and eighty dollars. So it's basically four hundred and forty dollars uh for, for each week that we, we would keep him on. Uh the current one summer health that we have here. Um we have money again in contingency that we haven't touched yet, uh the, the funds will be depleted by the end of October. So it looks like we're good through the end of October, but you want him on for a couple more weeks?
Uh that's gonna be into November, beginning of December. We, we still got a lot of crap to get done, so.
Um how about this, what if we approve it for two more weeks, which would take it through November fifteenth and revisit it at the November meeting? Does that work? We need a motion to do that, right? So we need a motion to extend summer uh work for one uh temp uh.
So it's through the end of October right now, so we're extending it for two more weeks, is what you're saying, okay.
We have the money, we have the money already set aside through the end of.
Correct, that's, that's the budget amounts.
Two more weeks into November.
And we'll probably, it sounds like we'll be taking the funds from contingency and we'll have to do a, a, some sort of motion about that in a future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to extend, oh, you're gonna do that, I'm sorry, you never say anything.
Two, two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks, let Kevin do it. He never, he never gives a motion, ever. So for him to jump in, I was like.
Alright, we'll give it, we'll give it to Kevin.
I'll second that.
Cause the mayor said give it to Kevin.
Oh good, then let's wait till we get to the end of this report.
Alright, uh and, and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, so we've extended him on through, it looks like November fifteenth, um can you make sure we revisit that in our next meeting? Great, and uh anything else in the report?
I'll make a motion be accepted as presented.
Bobby?
Second.
Second, Craig, um I just have one quick question, how many people have taken this up on the fifty fifty sidewalk?
One so far.
It looks really nice.
Where is it?
Um Martinez.
Parsons.
Oh.
Parsons and Abbott.
Okay. Um take some good pictures on that. I wanna get that, I don't think people here know that that's a thing. Um and I'd like to put it out there for people, so they know as we're coming up to, to next season that this is a thing. Um was the fifty fifty like? How, how did the, is it fifty fifty straight cost, or do they provide something, we provide something?
We, we go up and kinda provide the turnout and the cost of the concrete and they pay the. Putting it back in.
Okay.
In the form, so.
I'd like to get more information out there, so people know it's, it's, it's a viable option, so just take a picture, we'll figure that out later.
Only problem with, nothing wrong with the pro- the program itself, but people don't care about the properties, they're absentee landlords.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it kinda stinks, cause a lot of the sidewalks are like grown over on that stretch. So now there's a beautiful sidewalk that goes to like no sidewalk, so.
It's like that a lot of places, I'm, that's not the only, that's not an exception.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk, then the people are not responsible for maintaining it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Neil, one other question I had, um River Street, the railroad crossing passed it, the, between River Street. Between the crossing and Stewart's, that road, is that, are the, is rail gonna fix that?
Yeah, they just did it today.
I was gonna say, okay, I went across this morning, I thought it was fixed.
I just drove over, it's very nice.
Okay.
Oh, they finished it today?
No, this morning it wasn't, I know that.
They're going down to Kerry Avenue now.
Okay.
Cause they did, I mean, they've done a nice job on Elm Street, you know, they did a really nice job.
I, I saw them do it one day and I thought it was, I thought it was, I was glad and they basically finished off by just digging out crap and leaving, I was like, what, this is?
And they put sidewalks where there wasn't sidewalks on, on Elm Street, which is nice.
Great, alright, go pan in, go pan in, alright.
Also, Rob, are you doing now in the next meeting, just work with Denise on the appropriate budget transfer?
Okay, can you add that as well? Thank you. Um great, okay, uh we have the motion already um up and seconded, all in favor of accepting the report?
Aye.
Uh opposed, carries, thank you. Sewer report, I did get that one random number that I don't, we don't have plugged in on page five. Um from last year's numbers, uh so that one box in March of twenty twenty should be ninety seven thousand eight hundred and fifty gallons. Again, ninety seven thousand eight hundred and fifty, uh and the income uh for that was four thousand eight hundred and ninety two dollars fifty cents. I will update that in the next one and add out the numbers, but I do have added out the numbers there. For income last year, the income last year got up to a hundred and thirteen thousand.
That's right.
I'm gonna um, I'm actually gonna reach out to the water guys, and I've meant to this about two or three times and they keep forgetting. And I'm gonna ask them for the same numbers historically from last fiscal year and this fiscal year for. The water that we actually sell and truck us uh tang or come mine fill up. So that way we'll have that, cause we already have it for a sewer, we already have it for the police, I'm just gonna remember to do that. Uh which translates to, please remind me to do that, thanks. Uh any other things for sewer?
Nope.
In that case, looking for motion to approve the report? Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries. Great, water reports. Um is there anything to note? Uh Emily, we still gotta schedule you to get over there and, and, and get the, the run through and everything. Um I will say that there is um, we have issues again with the balance tank, we talked about it at the last meeting. Uh I took a bunch of uh pictures to send to the state, cause I'm not really happy about it. Um my impression of it, and this is an example of it, is they have to do welds. On certain points um on the tank. And the newer welds are a little bit darker and stick out and you can see that things are still leaking from those points. So we have um some, some leaks, the brown leaks are new because they actually cleaned off the surface when they were here last time. Um but it's hard to tell in this lighting, but if you look in person, you can see that the welds are bigger. Where they had to redo it and it's still leaking from the same spot. So the state knows, they're not happy, C T Mail knows, I think they're not happy, no one's happy, but also nothing's happening, so. We'll find out more about that.
Those are the carbon filter tanks?
Uh no, this is the balance tank, which is not related to the carbon filters, it's sort of, but not really, it's not, it's part of the whole system, but. Um it's not related to the filtration, anything like that. Um so we have two other uh water related uh items under new business, which we'll get to when, when we get to there, but it's, it's not, nothing complicated. Uh so unless you guys have any questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve the water.
Motion.
Second, second, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you. Yeah.
I was looking through Emily, I noticed that the, hasn't posted any testing results for like a year.
Oh gosh, yeah, that would be me, um I have them all, I just have them got.
Required to do them that often anymore, or do I have to go dig around D E C?
Shoot me an email and I'll get them to you. Um we, it, it stems in the fact that Brian and I were trying to get a new website up. Um and that fizzled out because we both are crazy busy and now Brian's bummed and moved out of the village. Um but we have Emily who's way cooler. Uh so I have them all, I'll just give them up on the website, but just ask me and I'll get you. What the state has been doing is they.
Are they still doing them monthly or quarterly or?
Biweekly, um biweekly, and C T Mail does separate ones, which we get. And when the state sends me the report, they actually basically send me the report from. I wanna say it was March of twenty eighteen, they just basically add to the next one, so I'll just get that to you and I'll have everything you need.
Okay.
Um and they're still doing it regularly to twenty five, fifteen, seventy five percent of each of the tanks.
I didn't know if we, again, I'm sure this is a settlement thing, if they agree to change the carbons more. After the, if there's any influence or?
The, the last thing that happened, uh the last two carbon changes.
That's why I'm asking, you can look back.
The last couple of carbon changes were not dictated by P F O A, which was the original plan, it was dictated by whichever thing leaked through first and that ended up being P F B A. Which moved way faster than P F O A did. Uh I think P F N A is in there, but P F B A is the first thing that breaks out, you'll see it on the reports. Uh there was another one that uh got detected recently, um but it's, 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 it's behind in terms of speed of moving through the filters, P F B A is. There's one that got detected at low levels that I hadn't seen before, so yippie dippy. That's, that's technical.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering if they were just changing the carburetors, you know, I don't know if it had got agreed to that they were gonna change them more frequently to stop.
Yes.
Throughs or?
I don't know if there is like a technical written down thing saying, but I know that the state is, has been pushing for that. Uh we've obviously been behind it and they have been doing that. Um and I think that we're actually gonna have a change out soon because we're gonna start seeing uh leakage out of the first tank into the mid fluid and that typically is the spark. But again, when P F B A happens, P F O A is still like three months behind before that starts to leak out, just with the way. But you can look at the spreadsheet and it's, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Fun stuff, yep. Um we have minutes that we got sent out today, I don't know if anyone had time to check over them, but we have minutes for September tenth. And then thank you Craig for the spot, uh the, the minutes for the September twenty fifth special meeting, so. If you guys got a, a chance to look through, we're looking for a motion to approve the September tenth regular meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Craig. I need you a second.
Second.
Thank you Bobby. Um were there, uh any changes, anything that was noted on the minutes? If not, um I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I wasn't here.
Okay, abstain, uh from Ben, thank you. And then uh looking for a similar motion for approving the September twenty fifth special meeting minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Ben, Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post and abstentions, okay, no. Great, trustee committee reports, Vanessa, anything?
Yes, we had the Green Lake Committee meeting, um right, Brian's last week.
Mm-hmm.
And um we're moving forward, everybody's really excited about it, we kinda talked about how we're gonna market it, get the community involved, get everybody excited. We got people on board, we want to put a nice big kiosk right there at the kayak pull off, where it's gonna list all of our businesses in town. So people will be able to park and come out. Jason Van Guinness said he'll build us whatever we want, so he'll do the wood part and then I'm gonna do a big painting. So we're gonna do like a illustration and then we wanna put like all the little pamphlets in there. Um we're trying to do something, maybe like create a. Art or something along the walk too, to bring color, bring more things and have people sponsor the different posts for those too. And then I talked to, you know, guys today, I gotta talk to you afterwards, but um.
Is that from Bob Murphy in the L L R P stuff?
We gotta, Bob needs a special, we have to set up a special meeting to present to everybody about that. I thought maybe the special meeting, we could do it, they need ten days notice, so we might, I don't know when we're gonna do the special meeting, if we have a special meeting. And then the Ted thing, we need you to sign Ted's project.
Okay, okay.
And that's it.
We need to, we need to advertise that in ten days' notice?
We, he doesn't need it though, for this, I mentioned that maybe we, depending on when the special meeting was, but we can wait until the following.
Okay, we may have to, just because if the, if the community meeting, it does end up being. In two weeks, that would be when we would ha- have it and by then we might as well just wait till the next meeting anyway.
No, there's no rush in that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and tell Bobby I got his voicemail, I was asleep when he called, but I got his voicemail and I'll, I will follow up with him. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, anything? Emily, you've been here for like five days, so. Come on, hurry up already, just kidding.
No, nothing, oh, we only have is that, but I mean.
We'll wait until, wait.
It's on, it's on the new business.
I'm gonna pass this down, so, so they can take.
Everybody has one, I gave everybody one, that's for everybody.
Overachiever. Alright, thank you, thank you. Alright, uh, so nothing else?
No.
Ben?
That's it.
Kevin?
Um, just thanks to all the people who took part in the Walter Wood Tractor Show, I think it was our biggest, uh, turnout yet.
Yeah.
It was great.
It was great.
Very, very good offense, very, very good offense.
Great, it was fun.
Ton of people, ton of people.
Great weather.
Yes, can't beat that. Uh, that's Steve Colvin one, the five K.
What else, Kevin?
That's it.
Alright, great. Um, is, is the parade, when the parade happens, is there a fixed time on the parade?
Noon.
Okay, alright, is that in all the information that goes out?
Yeah.
Sweet, okay.
The tractor parade.
The tractor parade.
That was one of the most tractors.
Noon, they'll be in school.
Tractors are down a little bit this year, but, uh, I think.
The parade was huge.
Yeah, I think we're down about eight since, from last year.
Unacceptable.
Next year we have to give.
That's a.
Greg do, uh, his father's.
I can.
Couple of mowers.
Drive my dad's Kubota.
I, I saw one, didn't make it, it was over in the River View parking lot on Sunday.
Didn't make it home.
Made it to the parade, but just made it across the bridge, that was it.
I feel like, uh, I feel like if we had a raffle on which tractor wasn't gonna make it on the parade, that could be some serious money intake there. Alright, okay.
It's quite, you know, some of these guys drive their tractor just for miles to get here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard people complaining about following Mark Kochel down from, all the way from the room sack. Somebody was complaining about that, I followed him all the way from the room.
That's great.
More warning to be made.
It was great, oh, what a great, great, alright, awesome, thank you, thank you Kevin, thank you guys. Okay, old business, um, municipal building phone systems, the next step I have to do is figure out the internet access. Because we have to change our internet access, um, it'd have to be a speedier connection, which is gonna be more money. So maybe we tie that into whatever budget changes we have to do with Denise anyway. Um, so once that's decided, then we'll be able to pull the trigger on that, and I, I've touched base a little bit with Jackie, so that's coming. Uh, but again, I'm looking for motion to table that.
Motion to table.
Second.
Thank you guys, Ben, thank you Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and again, I will have information at the next regular meeting, uh, on that. Um, Bobby?
Okay, uh, regarding the dedication of the municipal building in honor of Anne Borne.
Take a look and pass it on.
Um, we have the, the bronze plaque, is we have the design and the verbiage, uh, that the, uh, ladies in the office, uh, came up with, and, uh, the entire board agreed on, you think it's good?
Yep.
So we've given the okay to TJ Memorials to go ahead, and they've already filled out the paperwork with Denise as far as the PO and the money and all that stuff. And again, Marie, you wanna just, uh, tell me about, so what you decided about the stone?
Yeah, Tim was in today with the stone, we looked at a couple of different ones, he's gonna get, um, it's gonna be a polished stone, similar to the one that's out here on the left.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are gonna place it in the front of the building, if you're coming up the stairs on the left.
Okay.
And, um, he.
Is that a newly cleared spot down there?
It is newly clear.
Okay, if you look at the bottom of the stairs, you'll see the spot.
Yeah, actually, um, Anne's son Scott took the old hosta out, so it'll be ready to go, and um, Timmy and Neil are gonna coordinate when they put down the cement pad for the stone. He did hope that we would have it in before the November meeting.
Right, that's, he told me, we, estimated, uh, delivery was four weeks from date of order, and he ordered it last week, so I'm hoping that that will give us especially our meeting isn't till the fifteenth of November, so that, I believe, right, is it, I mean.
Uh, yeah.
No, it's the twelfth, I'm sorry, it's the twelfth.
Yes, twelfth.
We gotta coordinate, uh, dedication.
Yes, I've, I've talked to, I've talked to, um, I've talked to Scott already, and once I told, I told him, once I get a firm date, time, we'll notify the rest of, and I've talked to Tony Hayes, her brother, so the family's aware of what's going on.
Is it, uh, is it worth basically leaving there for a couple of weeks and officially dedicating at the next regular meeting, or do we?
Yeah, whatever, what, I, I think it's, we're kinda limited by, uh, uh,
It goes in when it goes in.
When we receive it is what dictates the time, so, but, but if we could do it for the, uh, it, and doesn't necessarily have to be in a regular meeting, we could do it on a, you know, a Saturday or Sunday afternoon or something, where everybody, where the whole, all the families can make it, cause his sis, her aunt's sisters are both out of town. Well, one of her sister, two of her sisters are out of town, and, and her two of her kids live out of town as well, so.
Let's, let's pick a date for that, and, and, um, do, we'll do an official unveiling.
So, once, once we.
So that we couldn't start the meeting like that.
Yeah, no.
I get the heart of other people being, but I mean, if we started out.
Maybe we can.
We can still go out and look at it.
We still might be able to do that, so, but.
Yeah.
I'll work on that, as soon as I get any more details, I'll let everybody know.
Okay.
Including the papers.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, I don't, we don't need to move on anything there, that's just.
Rolling now.
Um, we discussed and tabled the situation with the water heater last, uh, meeting, and I honestly, uh, was gonna do something with that this weekend, and everything went to crap with the server here and such. The last thing we left at is I, I felt like we were kind of undecided as to how to, how to handle this, we had requested information, um, on the water heater about the voltage and, and use, and we didn't have that available, nor were we gonna have that, um.
Has she reached out anymore?
She did, uh, reach out on email a few days, uh, ago to find out if anything has developed yet, um, I feel like.
Couldn't find any more information on her end?
Uh, correct, let me bring that up real fast. Um, the furnace is working fine, and she wa, she just was just basically asked, uh, if there's been any news on, uh, if the village will reimburse for the water heater.
And didn't we, we discussed last, I think, cause Kevin and Ben weren't here, I don't think, at the regular meeting. So that's why we tabled.
That's why we tabled it, okay.
And, right, cause.
So.
I had made a motion to, that we'd agree on it half, is what the motion I think I, I made was, and we but then we tabled it, cause Brian, uh, didn't wanna do anything, so that's, as far as I know, that's where we left off.
Okay, and we, we did table it because people weren't here, I couldn't remember what we decided on.
There was an important decision, the whole board should be here.
And Andy, the basic, from, from, from the, the legal side of it, um, we don't have the details we would need to be able to determine, um, well, do you wanna just?
Sure, so this falls in the category of the village residents making a claim against the village. And the village law provides that the village board can settle any claims in any manner it seems in the overall public interest. But just, just as a matter of proving a claim, there should be some, it would be my opinion, there should be some evidence in front of the board to substantiate the claim.
Look, a copy of the bill.
Well, we had that, we have that.
We have that.
No, you gave him a copy of the bill.
We have the bill, we just don't have the age of the water heater.
Right.
Some of the issues are obviously the age of the water, had it been repaired, had it been damaged, um, of the, of the water heater. Um, how long it been there, what condition it was in, what was its value when it, uh, was damaged? All these things are relevant items for you to take into account in terms of if you are going to resolve the claim and pay any amount out, there should be a, sound like a lawyer, but an evidentiary basis on which to base your opinion. And thus far, it, there may have been an, an invoice, an initial invoice for a purchase, but you have no further information beyond that. Really, a claimant would need to come forward and say, this was the water heater. What would have been easy here in retrospect and hindsight was, do not dispose of the water heater, keep the water heater.
Yeah.
You'd be able to inspect it, you could see, you could see its condition, you could see what its value was at the time of the damage.
Even get from the contractor.
You could determine what if any reimbursement would be made, but that evidence is gone, and so.
Jim and Josh, were they there to see what?
Yeah, they checked it out, they, they, the, Jim and Josh have pretty much always said that when the pressure increase happened up there and the two heaters went, it was.
There's one, there was one that happened too, correct?
Uh, yeah, so it was just those two.
But, but it's, right, but the other one, we didn't get a claim.
We never heard anything from the other, it just, it just happened, yeah.
I feel like we're a small village, everybody knows everybody, and that's why we're spending so much time thinking about this, and if we lived somewhere larger based upon evidence, we would be like, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, and as much as we wanna help, because this is a, a thing that the village did to improve the infrastructure, we do also, also have the fiduciary responsibility of taxpayer money.
That's, that's a relevant factor too, and it's also relevant that, I don't know how many total houses are involved on, on the, the job, but it was twenty some odd, I think, homes.
Hundred something?
Yeah, well, it could have been a twenty-year-old water heater, like Brian had said, like, why would you?
Yeah, but not knowing that, you don't know that it's twenty years old, without, without talking to the contractor who took it out, or to the, if they can prove something, and, and you said that she responded, that they weren't able to retrieve anything?
Uh, yeah, they, they didn't have anything, I did not reach directly after the contractor.
Which was?
It's Conway.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you'd like, I can follow up and find out, and it's totally up to you, but I can't.
Yeah, I'm, I.
I mean, I'm sure he'll give us that information.
And I can ask, I can sort of just explain to her where we're thinking, why we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place on this.
Uh, I think you have to make it clear that the burden of proving her claim is on the property owner, not the board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So she's gotta do a little work here as well, to try to come forward, if that's bringing in a contractor to provide some testimony, if you will, you're not gonna put anyone in their oath, but you need to hear this stuff in order to make
Yep.
A rational decision, and you're correct, that this is not the board's money, this is taxpayer money.
Yeah, okay, so I think the plan it sounds like is I will reach out to her and explain where we're at, and, and sort of explain how the burden of proof needs to be on, on her, um, and to reach out to JP Conway.
She can get something writing from Conway, is that considered that, that he can?
Be relevant information?
Right.
And he may, he may have it, he may have it on his record, I'm sure he does. Alright.
Motion to table until November.
Thank you Ben.
Second.
Craig, thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Alright, new business, there's one thing I have to do before I forget, uh, I talked to you guys about those.
Now you won't buy.
Before you go.
Oh geez, sorry, transfer station, I'll have anything new update in terms of pricing, but we're gonna have to meet Neil on that sooner rather than later. No, not Neil behind the door, Neil right there, um, to, to start hashing out some prices, and Ben, you should be there as well. So we'll have to just let you do that meeting, so, otherwise, I'm just looking to table that again.
Motion to table, second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I just wanna keep it on the meeting, so it's on the radar. Now, new business. I asked you guys about the six chairs that we used to have in this room, that I just put outside because no one wants them, and they're awful and super low, and um, do you, do you love those chairs?
No, I can't believe you have one.
So, um, uh, there are six of them, we, officially as the board, we should have a, we should, uh, do a motion to access the six chairs so that we can properly dispose of them.
Motion. Fire?
Uh, I don't care, it's up to you, I mean, Neil's just gonna drop them off the dump.
Can maybe go to the transfer station?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I make the motion, I can dispose of the chairs.
Thank you Craig.
Make a motion, we donate them to the new highway garage.
They don't like Kevin's name, I don't know.
Is that the part where you, you sit, Kevin's name? Alright, uh.
Kevin's driveway will be clouded and.
So the motion, um, for, uh, for Ben seconded, I think it was by Craig, Bobby, or someone, um, to, um, access them and bring them to the transfer station, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Alright, um, we have two resolutions, um, I did get these out to you guys earlier, which is a thing I'm trying to do more regularly. Um, the first resolution is authorizing execution of documents in connection with the Housick Falls Woods Brook Home Buyout Program. Um, we're all familiar with, but whereas there is one particular whereas I wanted to read, I'll, I'll read the last two, whereas New York State, um, Housing Trust.
Which one do you want, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the, this is the first one, authorizing execution of documents in connection with, not, not that one, the other one.
Okay.
Um, so on page two, uh, the last two whereas statements, whereas the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation Office of Community Renewal, as part of the Housick Falls Woods Brook Home Buyout Program requirements mandates the preparation and execution of certain environmental compliance forms for review. And whereas the Village of Housick Falls through its environmental consultant, has prepared the required amount, environmental compliance forms as required by New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation for this action, and such environmental compliance forms are ready for execution by the village and submission to New York State for review. Now therefore be it resolved by the village, uh, by the Board Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls, uh, hereby authorizes the mayor to execute all required environmental compliance forms, including the program description form and environmental compliance checklist for submission to the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation Office for, of Community Renewal in connection with the Housick Falls Woods Brook Home Buyout Program. So I need someone to offer the form, the resolution.
Motion.
Thank you Bobby, and seconded by Ben. Any questions on this? Anything you wanna add, is what it is.
No seeker was completed at your special meeting, but these are some additional state forms that need to be completed and submitted.
Alright, in that case, roll call vote?
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And when does the historic preservation component take place?
Uh, that's completed, Chipo did review all of the properties slated for acquisition and demolition, and signed off.
The, the two that they had issues with were two that were not pursuing at this point, and that was the, um, the Dodge Building and the corner apartment building.
Center, uh, church, church remain, remain and all.
Yeah. Alright, um, so that, Ben, could I, uh,
Yes.
Ask your radio voice to, uh, read this one for me?
Sure. Which whereas do I start with?
I don't think, does he need to do any of the whereas's on the second one?
Then now therefore be it resolved, on the second page.
Alright, so, so the, the top part here and then the second page.
I'll take some look. Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village.
Wait, wait, you gotta read this part first.
I just asked if I had to do whereas's, and I said no.
No, not the whereas, the introduction thing on the top. Oh, I'm on the wrong page, I saw this page in mind, that first, and then the other stuff, sorry.
Thank you, more reading, I'm excited. Resolution acknowledging real estate purchase contracts and authorizing execution of documents required for closing of title in connection with Village of Housick Falls Woods Brook Home Buyout Program. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls hereby authorizes the mayor, me, and any other necessary village official and/or village attorney to execute all documents necessary to complete the closing of title for those properties currently under contract pursuant to the Woods Brook Home Buyout Program, Twoitt, Three Hall Street, Five Hall Street, Seven Hall Street, One Hundred and Seven Main Street, One Fifteen Main Street, One Hundred through One Hundred and Eight Church Street, and Twenty Seven Elm Street.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, need, uh, someone to offer, uh, the resolution?
I'll offer it, I read it.
Thank you Ben, and seconded?
I'll second it.
Thank you Emily.
Thanks Emily.
Uh, any further discussion?
I, I just have a question.
Yeah, sure.
On the authorization statement, it says, I know what it says, I read it, but what's the intent? So it authorizes the mayor to sign, obviously, it authorizes the village attorney to sign, who else are we authorizing to sign? It says any other village employee, or? The, the reason we put that language in was, we're not through the state review yet. There will be disbursements of state money for the closings, and Denise may need to execute some things, because the way the program will work is the state on closing by closing basis. They will disperse the funds into an account set up by the village. Denise may need to do some things to disperse the monies out of that account after closing.
Also, there was one other thing where they wanted a second signature, and Bobby ended up signing for that as well.
Right.
So this is.
So I, I, that, that all makes sense, so you're, you're, you're a required, or you're designated, obviously, the village attorney, and then.
Denise as treasurer.
Nothing further than that necessarily.
Unless they would need Bobby again to sign up.
That's, I think that's, that's, that's perfectly reasonable.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't, you know, we weren't gonna pass all this off and just send Marie to the meetings and stick her with all of this.
Marie, I, I, that is a great idea, put that on the agenda for next meeting, yeah, no, that's, that's.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Alright, great, thank you. Any other questions? We did have it offered and seconded, so, alright, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?[1667.74]
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Alright, good. Um, we had, uh, one more resolution, um, Ben, again, your soothing voice, uh, this one is, um.
My sleepy voice?
Soothing, soothing, I'm, I'm sleepy, you're soothing. Uh, uh, this is regarding the, um, DEC, um, agreement to continue maintaining the flood wall.
Is that a sneeze? No, I'm not gonna do it that way. Resolution authorizing execution of contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls hereby authorizes and confirms the execution of contract T zero one one six four eight. By and between the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the Village of Housick Falls. Providing for routine maintenance for the Housick Falls Flood Control Project on and along the Housick River. And further hereby authorizes the mayor to execute such agreement with an effective execution date of October fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Awesome, thank you, sorry, just stabbed you right there. Uh, looking for, uh, that resolution to be offered?
Motion.
Uh, Craig, um.
I'll second it.
You guys are so nice. Alright, Craig offered it, um, Bobby seconded it, um, any discussion?
Um, what's the timetable once we take ownership of the properties, or tearing them down?
Oh, no, this is not related Woods Brook stuff, this is, this is the flood wall stuff, this is flood wall.
What, what does maintenance mean?
It's what we typically do, Neil, you, you and Denise went through that, to mowing.
And you get paid what, you get paid what for it?
The, the village gets an annual payment of ten thousand eight hundred, it's a four-year term contract, so the bulk is forty-three thousand two hundred. And the agreement sets forth what's required, so it's, it is basically.
The village, who's able to multiply everything.
He's very fortunate, you don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, fantastic, it's not very well maintained. The schumac growing up and things like that.
The schumac is tough, especially down in the rocks, cause it grows through, grows through in the rocks.
Do you guys all call it schumac? Cause I grew up as calling it sumac, am I like the only one? Okay, I didn't, I didn't grow up in Housick Falls, that's, that's clearly my problem here, I know, alright, alright, any other questions?
No, you're not. I know.
Discussion, alright, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
I'm stuck on schumac.
I think it's schumac. I don't know, I'm from outside too, so.
There you go, there you go.
I have a employee marine condo, the contract's ever signed, he need to send a copy of the resolution to the state and the workers' comp attorneys.
Yes, I got that all on my desk, ready to go.
Excellent.
Alright, um, we had a request from the Cheney Library, um, uh, and I actually had a follow-up, uh, today with a question for them that I'm trying to find in my email. Um, the request basically was asking if the village would consider, um, plowing the, um. Uh, I think the new sort of lot that they have put behind Cheney Library off of the, what's the side street right here?
Hard Lane.
Hard, uh, harder lane, harder, harder lane.
Harder Lane?
H A R D E R.
I literally drive it every day, and I don't even know it.
Doc Harder, for old Doc Harder.
Doc Harder, okay, um, uh, we do some things on a somewhat regular basis al- already, and some of the more major storms, it sounds like we do a lot of work there. Typically not on the smaller storms. Um, I'd sent you guys a copied letter, I asked Neil for his thoughts, and he passed them on, and the concerns. Um, which I cannot find that email, um, the concerns were if it's not paved yet, there's gonna be issues, and there's also insurance liability issues. Um, I did ask if they were planning on paving it, and the message I got was we will not be paving the lot before this coming winter. If Cheney Library gets the New York State Construction Grant we applied for, we will be paving during the spring and summer months. So, Neil, is there anything else you wanna add beside your concerns, or the thought we're, we're warned?
What do we currently do, Neil?
Oh, we usually do the front, the front sidewalk, snowblowing that, so.
Every storm?
Not every storm.
The bigger storms.
But is that because of Route twenty-two, or is it because of the library?
Well, we snowblow the sidewalk at twenty-two just for the purpose of the kids.
No, right, I understand.
So, but you never go to park. Yeah.
If it was, if it was paved later, would the con, would it be a different conversation? Because our plaza, it sounds like, I mean, just for a simple point, our, our plows are too big, and it's gonna break up the ground and screw things up. If it's paved, is it a different conversation?
Well.
Or is there gonna be similar concerns?
Then you're committing.
You're still gonna have the same concern, you, you're gonna have to have a liability in.
Yeah, it's.
Plus your, oh, your can of worms.
You are.
And challenge on a walk through driveway cloud.
And municipalities park private rights always raises issues.
This is not anything against the library, I just think it opens up a huge liability for the, on the village's behalf, and.
What the library should consider as an alternative is coming to the board and asking for a little extra in the budget. Where they can then contract with a private party to plow.
They just put it on the tax rolls for an increase last year.
They're funding.
Thirty bucks, ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's, I, I mean, that's.
They, they need to look at their budget, but in terms of having municipal plows go in there, a, a private lot.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all in agreement, and this is not a good idea.
I'm worried even about the side, I hate to be, you know, and I said it in the email, I, I, concerns me about the, the sidewalk, we, we. Clear the sidewalk and somebody slips and fall, are they gonna sue the village, or are they gonna sue the library?
Who put the sidewalk in? Was the sidewalk done as part of the state highway?
Well, there's two sidewalks, there's the front sidewalk, which is part of the twenty-two project, right?
Right.
But then there's a new one they've been working on in back.
That library is responsible for.
Okay, the library's responsible.
You have a sidewalk in front of your house, you're responsible for.
Right, that's, that's my concern.
It's a courtesy that we go up High Street and River Street and, you know, open up these sidewalks.
And you do it, you do it on, it's front, in front of, from Key Bank, uh, around the corner up, it's not like you just start there at the library, correct?
No, we usually start about the library.
Oh, you do, so you don't take care of the ones down in, in lower.
Those are usually shovel older, they have paths through them.
No, the reason, cause the reason I'm saying this, cause those are businesses, there's business, you know, the liquor stores there, and that's, I'm just trying to think, compare, that's all.
Lots of municipalities, uh, do sidewalks though.
And I'll, I'll, we'll work on a letter, and I'll run it by you before I send it back as a response, okay, alright, uh, we don't need any fur- further action, that's the discussion. Alright, great, um, two actions, uh, in terms of, uh, water, thank you, as always, Marine. Uh, the first one, we have three quotes for work that would be, uh, need to be done, uh, that would allow the new pump station that we did up on Rensselaer Street. To communicate with the water treatment plants. Uh, we have three quotes, um, the first quote. The lowest quote was from Emmons for six thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars, but it does include a forty-five dollar monthly service charge on a regular basis. Which comes out to five hundred and forty dollars additional annually.
What do we get for that?
Um, in all three quotes, we get, um, whatever equipment is needed to mount, uh, on the pump station and installed, and whatever equipment or software is needed down there.
I guess I was asking, what do we get for the forty-five dollars?
Oh, I have no clue what that is, cause no, no one else has that, it sounds like it's, um.
Right here, monthly, just for.
For, for connectivity, which I don't know what, I mean, uh, is it internet provided? I don't, I don't understand that at all.
Yeah, okay, I didn't either.
So that one is sixty-one ninety-one, if you add, uh, five forty to that, it comes out to sixty-seven thirty-one. Uh, for a year, that would include the annual, um, plus the additional five forty each month. The second one was from GCS, which came in at sixty-five thirty-five. Uh, and third one, uh, from Saratoga Networks LLC and Mark Brody, or Road, I'm not sure how you say that, was sixty-nine nineteen seventy-five. I spoke with, uh, the water guys, and they are doing something that they normally don't do, is they are pushing for the highest one. Because, uh, two main reasons, one, he's done a lot of work already in the water treatment plant. Um, and he knows the system in and out, and the other two do not know the system as well. Um, and there's a concern that if there's something else that the other two run into, that they wouldn't expect, but Mark's gonna know, cause he knows the systems, the cost may come up. That's kind of the gist. Um, our village procurement policy, does it, it allows us to choose between the three, doesn't require us to do lowest?
General approach on any municipal acquisition is lowest responsible bid or quote. Your procurement policy requires you to get the three quotes.
Which we did.
For the purpose of making a determination who's the lowest responsible, there's two parts of that, it's not just the low number, it's who you deem to be the most responsible bidder.
Uh, so again, and, and, and both, uh, Jim and Josh, uh, have said, you know, this is a decision, it's up to you, but they would like to have. Uh, they would like Saratoga Networks to be the one considered, um.
Difference, three hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Yeah.
Between them and the high bidder.
Could the, um.
Or them and the lowest bidder, I'm sorry.
Could the lowest, but, not the lowest bidder, but the other bidder take action if we?
Generally, no, the, the public bidding rules, courts have said enough for the benefit of a disgruntled bidder, they're really a taxpayer issue. Making sure that there's not a waste of public funds. I mean, think about it, if bidders, disgruntled bidders, losing bidders were allowed to sue on these. It'd be endless litigation over every public bid.
Uh, Saratoga Networks LLC is the one.
So it, it really is a, kind of a taxpayer and responsible using taxpayer funds.
And that one doesn't have the forty-five dollars.
None of the others do, just the.
No, just that one company.
Yeah.
If, if the board's inclined to move in that direction, probably good idea, idea to describe for the record. Um, the type of equipment and the particular service being provided that may. Um, constitute a specialized service, which is also a factor in considering which to bid. There's an exception to lowest responsible bid for specialized services, they're in the nature of expert, but it's a more generic term, a specialized service. If the equipment you're buying or the service you're, you're providing, um, is specialized, that's a factor that the board can take into account, so. For the record, if you have any additional information on particular equipment, or.
Okay.
Would, um, support a basis for going with a higher bid, that would be helpful.
Um, specifically, uh, when we did the pump station change out, the existing. Radio communication realized we, it would not be, it would not work with the new equipment, so they're replacing the tank radio with, with a gateway radio. Um, they're moving the tank level signal to spare input on booster pump station. Um, they're gonna connect a new radio to the booster pump PLC via the ethernet. Uh, data mined booster pump PLC for alarms and status values, and program gateway radio to read them, so that if alarms go off there and it communicates with the water treatment center. Um, they will receive the alerts.
I, I know why they want this.
Yeah.
They all want this.
Oh, yeah, cause it's a huge, I mean.
It's, it's.
It, it's no longer repla- waiting for someone in the local to say, hey, that red light is on, what does that mean again?
This is huge for Ben and Petersburg, yeah, the system would be well worth its money.
Yeah, um, so that's where we're at.
So just two questions, one, can we, are we sure that there is no ongoing fee for the other two bids, just because they didn't put it in there? You wouldn't necessarily include your monthly fee in your quotation.
Sure.
So. I, I just find it weird that one bidder put in, you know, I don't consider them the lowest bidder if they have an ongoing, if they're basically, if we don't pay our monthly bill, they're gonna turn the system off.
I don't understand why they, they're requiring connectivity as a service charge.
That's, that would be a concern, is.
Yeah.
It, either they all three should be requiring it, or none of them should have it, it makes me wonder if we missed something. If the other two have a hidden cost that we're not taking into account.
It's not on there, so we don't, they were surprised to see that too, they didn't understand why that was there as well. That's all I got.
You, you may be comparing apples to oranges on your quotes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say that the GCS and Saratoga ones are very specific, and they all align with each other, this one seems very generic, it's just.
I don't, I don't really consider that one the lowest, if there, if that is a mandatory fee that we're gonna have to pay for the rest of the life of the system.
No.
Yeah.
That's not the low, that's not the lowest cost.
It would be the middle.
Anyway, no.
It'd be the middle when you had a year.
It's sixty-six forty-one versus sixty-five thirty-five versus sixty-nine nineteen, which is the highest, so.
I did that wrong. Yeah, yeah, okay, um, so in that case, I guess, um, just looking to see what you guys want to do, um, and then entertain a motion to approve of.
Do we need to make it? Do we need to vote out tonight?
Uh, ideally, yes, cause they're itching to get this in.
I mean, based on the input from, you're talking about, from the water plant operators, they're putting their recommendation, and I, to me. The, the matter of three hundred something dollars is, their word is worth that much money in difference, as far as I'm concerned. They deal with these, these, this company on a, have you dealt them in the past?
Yeah, Mark has been at, at the municipal, or at the water treatment plant, doing a lot of computer tech.
I, based on that alone, I would, I would make the recommendation that we accept the bid from Saratoga Networks LLC.
Okay, so everybody agree with that? Sounds like we need to make a motion.
What's that, Craig?
I'll second the motion.
So is that your official motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Okay, so Bobby.
That's sixty-nine nineteen seventy-five.
Seconded by Craig. Uh, any further discussion?
Um, did we adequately document as at per any discussion?
I think there's, there's been discussion on the record that, um, two factors that the board finds, the, what's the company you're warning it to?
Saratoga Networks LLC.
To be a responsible bidder with past histories, and also that particular equipment and service can be deemed to be specialized.
Okay, great, uh, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Carrie's the answer, great. Uh, the last one is regarding fence repair, um, this came up, uh, in one of the county inspections, I think. Um, Jim has spent a lot of time trying to get quotes on this, originally, we only had one quote, and that was the quote for fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. To ver- do various, um, repair and installation at the water tower, the garage area, and the wellhead enclosures, and again, these are recommendations from, um. Uh, from the county that have to be done. Um, as Jim was calling around a bunch of places, um, people were not able to do it, or weren't gonna get back. Uh, uh, Avsco Fence was one, Brock Fence was another one, and Morris Fence was another one, who were not gonna bid on this. Um, but he did get the name of someone else, uh, more local, in Troy, Chain Link Fence, and their quote came back at fifty-seven sixty, five thousand seven hundred sixty. Which is, uh, quite a difference from the original fifteen thousand dollar quote we got. Now, that only gives us two quotes for the three, but we have reached out to a bunch and gotten no answers. Um, so again, we're asking if we can make a decision on those, uh, two, two quotes, Andy?
Yeah, and on that one, certainly your procurement policy says three quotes, but when a board does make a good faith effort to get the third quote, you've reached out to three. Um, companies, they have not supplied any quote, that that good faith effort satisfies your procurement policy, in my opinion, so. You can review the two quotes that you didn't obtain.
And it looks like, I, I mean, I don't know the exact difference, but look at the Sienna Fence, looks like they're replacing. A fourteen foot wide gate and a ten foot wide double swing gate with, but, and it looks like Chain Link Fence is repairing. The damage and repairing the barbed wire fence on the, on those gates, and the hinges, so. Fifteen thousand two thirty versus fifty-seven sixty is.
Yeah.
It's, it's not three hundred eighty-four dollars, I think it's kind of a no-brainer.
Okay, so are you looking to, um?
I, I'd like a motion, make a motion, we, the award the bid to Chain Link Fence connection.
I'll second.
At five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Seconded by Craig, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You should change it to the executive of the Village of Housick Falls, not the town of Housick Falls.
We'll, we'll fix that when we sign. Alright, great, um, at this point, um, we're gonna enter executive session, uh, in a moment for purposes of discussing potential litigation. Um, anything else you wanna bring up to the board? We'll adjourn after that, so at this point, I'm looking for motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben, seconded by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we enter motion at seven twenty-eight PM, executive session, seven twenty-eight PM.